All right, I'd like to call to order the June 17, 2025, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you'd kindly call the roll.
Daniel Kuschakshin.
Present.
Gene Marseille Jr.
Present.
Will Carente.
Present.
Steven Myans.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Deborah Rain.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Patrick Mayfield is not present.
Thank you. Next order of business is approval of the May 20, 2025 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Do we have any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Chair, Planning Board members, Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator. Going to give you the update since the April meeting, since I wasn't here in May. City Commission cases they've approved. First, we have Oasis Tower, which was located on this property in Center Park. They came back and did a major amendment to build a 323-unit, 12-story apartment building, approximately 129 feet high. You heard this request at your February meeting and Commission approved this on April 28th by a vote of 4-2-0. Next one is 4200 North Australian, which is Community Service Office Building for Palm Beach County. Application was, I can stand way back, application was for rezoning from CS to CSPD, the build, which is Phase 1, which is 57,000 square feet office building with 190 parking spaces for Phase 1. You heard this at your March 18th meeting and Commission approved this on May 12th. Next is City Place. This was to create a new sub-area for the Hibiscus Garage as shown here in red. And basically, oops, sorry about that, what did I just do? And basically, for new 7-story rooftop parking, new elevation on Hibiscus Street. So this is create the Hibiscus Garage sub-area. It was also to create the regulations for the sub-area and to rename Rosemary Square back to the original City Place, which everybody calls it anyway, but, okay. So maybe we have wrote City Place for the last time, won't change it again, so. You heard this at your April 15th meeting and Commission approved this on May 27th. Next case is 3705 South Flagler Drive. This was for a 9-story, 27-tower down on South Flagler. It was rezoned from a multifamily 32, identity to a residential plan development. You heard this at your May 18th meeting, excuse me, March 18th meeting, and Commission approved this on their, on May 27th. Next one was a DMP text amendment. This was to allow workforce housing developments to use height only where building, where other developments are limited to the use of high-end stories. So it's the same height, but they don't have to do count number of stories. This was for workforce housing developments or projects that contain workforce housing in the downtown area. You heard this on your April 15th meeting and Commission approved this on June 6th. And the last one was also a DMP text amendment to provide additional standards for hospital use and to further clarify, update the existing definition for hospitals. And again, this is in the DMP. You heard this again at your April 15th meeting. Commission approved this again on June 6th. That concludes staff presentations. Have any questions?
Let me begin by noting for the record that shortly after the staff presentation began, Patrick Mayfield joined us. I did have one question. With regard to our agenda item, the code revision case 2506, is that a code revision case we're voting on, or is this just notification?
Discussion.
Just a discussion, okay.
No voting tonight, we want to discuss it. And we still have some issues to work out with our Law Department, but we still wanted to bring it, because we said we were going to bring it back.
I understand, I just, I was confused as to why it wasn't listed with the code revision cases, but that explains it.
Yes.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Any questions? Any questions here? All right, thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. Next is a declaration of ex parte communications. Let me begin by saying that I have had no ex parte communications, I have received no written communications, I have conducted no investigations, I made no site visits, I made, I have received no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Let me begin with you.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, not conducted any investigations, I have not made any site visits, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thanks, Sam. Deborah.
As relates to the matter of this agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to tonight's agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, nor have I made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to the matter on the agenda tonight, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Patrick.
With respect to all agenda items this evening, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Gene.
As to all items on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to the matter on the agenda, I, Tanyan Kuschakshin, have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you, you may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, planning board cases, of which there are none, code revision cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to other business and a discussion of code revision case number 2506.
Good evening, Planning Board members. For the record, Kevi DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. I would like to start off and reiterate that for the subject case, that's on tonight's agenda, is just for discussion purposes only, and no vote is required. At the April 15th Planning Board meeting, the Board directed staff to further refine the proposed regulations for the North Flagler Overlay District and to further clarify some aspects of the proposed regulations, including the submerged land language, active use liner, and workforce housing incentive. So, so that it's clear for everyone in attendance today, the area for the proposed North Flagler Overlay District is bounded by the city's limits to the north, North Flagler Drive to the US, the Intracoastal Waterway to the east, and 44th Street to the south, as shown in the map. Now, the intent of the development regulations for the proposed North Flagler Overlay District remains the same, and it is to create a place of common vision and physical predictability for new construction along the waterfront, to reinforce the existing architectural character within the area, and to provide for development projects that are complementary to the surrounding residential network. And with these proposed regulations, no properties will be rezoned, no existing approvals or entitlements will be revoked. And the regulations also prohibit floor area ratio variances, front and side setback variances, height variances, and new plant developments. Now, the proposed onsite development characteristics, such as the pedestrian connection requirement and the maximum floor area ratio limitations, remain the same as shown. And again, the maximum floor area ratio limitation is to better regulate the size and amassing of buildings within this area. Now, staff has made some changes to the proposed conditional minimum setback requirements for portions of buildings above 40 feet in height. And as you can see in the table, we are recommending, recommending changes to all the front setback requirements and all the side setback requirements. I will come back to this table later. So there were several factors into how staff has come up with these setbacks, and that, those factors include the physical relationship between the single-family residences and the high-rise multifamily residential buildings. And it also includes factors such as the depth of lots within this area and the width of lots within this area. And as you can see in this visual, the gray-shaped area is the buildings. The 60-foot right-of-way detailed at the bottom is the area for the North Flagler Drive area. And the text within the, in yellow, is the proposed front setback requirements. As you can see, they increase as the height of the buildings increase. Can the Board, can, can you see the yellow text?
Yeah, we can see it.
Oh, God. Yes. The table, so here's the table, and what was being shown in that visual was the front setback requirements. So for building portions above, between 430 feet in height, the front setback requirement is 45 feet. For the building portions above, from 131 to 260 feet in height, the front setback requirement is 175 feet. And the front setback requirement for building portions above 260 feet is 215 feet. Now, the side setback requirement is 30 feet for portions of the building above 40 feet. However, there's a minimum 15-foot side setback requirement for parking uses only that are located on properties with a width of 150 feet and width or less. And this is just a general graphic illustrating the same. Proposed exterior lighting illumination limitation of 0.5-foot candles remains the same as previously presented. And the permitted base height remains the same at 40 feet for buildings within the North Flagler Overlay District. And the maximum height limitation for buildings within the North Flagler Overlay District is 300 feet with the height bonus incentive. So staff has made changes to bonus incentive provisions, and those changes include the removal of the workforce housing incentive, so that's no longer being proposed. And what's remaining is the infrastructure improvements incentive. And with this incentive, it offers a bonus height range between 20 feet to 260 feet. And as you can see in the footnote here, staff has expounded on the language regarding submerged lands. And that states, "This applies to any property with an aggregate of upland and submerged land acreage of 2.5 acres or more. Otherwise, the maximum additional height increase is 200 feet for any property with an aggregate of upland and submerged land acreage of less than 2.5 acres. And the amount of submerged land to be used in determining the maximum additional height increase shall not exceed the gross square footage of upland property." And all this means is basically that if you have a property that's, that has an aggregate of upland and submerged land acreage of 2.5 acres or more, the maximum building height limitation is 300 feet. But if it's less than 2.5 acres, the maximum building height limitation is 240 feet. So with the infrastructure improvements, height bonus incentive, developers will receive a credit for the actual construction of improvements or payments made to the city for improvements to the infrastructure within the area bounded by the city limits to the north, Broadway to the west, the Intracoastal Waterway to the east, and 36th Street to the south. And as you'll see on the next slide, this extends beyond the proposed boundaries for the North Flagler Overlay District. And with that said, I will hand it over to the Assistant Director, Anna Maria Alpante.
Thank you, Kevi. Kevi did a good job explaining the whole thought process behind the regulations. I'm just going to explain how we calculated the proposed contribution in exchange for the height. So the height benefit will provide a community some benefits. And the way we did it is some, a part of the discussion that was presented before with the Board regarding capital improvement projects that were needed in the area. So we identify all the capital improvement projects in terms of engineering projects, public utility projects, and even including the improvements to the fire station that were necessary to kind of support the new units that are coming in the area. And that's the $21.8 million is the estimate of how, what the cost of incurring these improvements will be. And we basically divide that cost on the number of units that are proposed. It could be approved and not built, or potential units on those sites that are open for redevelopment. And that's around 960 units that could be built along the corridor. And that was divided basically on the cost per unit and then the average unit size that was done. And that determined basically a contribution of $10.98 for each additional square foot above the permitted by height. So what we are proposing is basically a cost per square foot instead of by height of, by feet of height that was previously proposed. Didn't do anything. For square footage, and it's anything that is above the permitted by right. So depending on the size of the property, depending on the design of the project, if the project complies with the underlying zoning, we will not charge for that square footage, we'll charge for any square footage above that does not comply with the base zoning. That's kind of the idea with the, with the concept. I think that's the part that I wanted to explain now. Kevi is going to go over the architectural standards.
So staff has made a few changes to the proposed architectural design standards. Those changes include the removal of the National Fire Protection Association requirements language that was associated with the finestration standards. And now staff is prohibiting mechanical, mechanical equipments located within the front setback area for properties within this district. The proposed minimum and maximum parking requirements for multifamily residential uses within the district remains the same as previously presented. So staff has made changes to the proposed parking screening requirements. Those changes include the removal of the active use liner building screening requirement along the sides. And it also includes the screening of all levels of parking garages along the front, which was a recommendation by the public. And the active use means a use within an enclosed building designed for human occupation with a direct view to adjacent streets or public open space. And this can include residential units, a lobby area, fitness gym area, or meeting space, et cetera. Staff is now proposing an active use liner minimum area requirement. As you can see in the table, 60% of buildable lot frontage for properties with a lot width less than or equal to 100 feet, and it's 80% of buildable lot frontage for properties with a lot width greater than 100 feet in size. And the proposed street skate requirements remains the same, where a 12-foot wide multipurpose pathway, a 7-foot wide landscape area, and street lighting are all required along the east side of North Flagler Drive. And here's the tentative schedule. So the subject case would have to come back before the Planning Board, before it proceeds to City Commission for final determination. And this concludes, prior to this, I would like to submit into the record two emails that I received from individuals today in regards to the subject case.
Any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. TK, any questions?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about why the workforce was removed from the calculation on the incentives.
The workforce was determined that it was not needed within this area.
Am I correct?
Well, it, it was more because we received, the last time we look at it, we discussed with the Board, it was determined, one, it was difficult to, I mean, it was unrealistic to assume that the affordable housing units will be in these properties. They are planned as high-end residential. So the calculation for the offsite unit was a little bit more complicated, considering that we are not offering additional incentives in terms of density. So they are allowed to do the same number of units that they are allowed right now. The incentive is only for height. So with that combined with the fact that the community was more interested in a benefit directly for the community in terms of improvements, we considered it was kind of a simpler way to do it, to just approach it from the infrastructure perspective and not have the two options that we had before.
Okay, because you said affordable, I was, I thought it was workforce.
It was workforce, yes, sorry, it was workforce, yes.
Okay, so there was no thinking was there's not going to be any demand for building be workforce in this?
On-site, not. I mean, it was very unlikely to happen, so we consider like, the north end of the city has already a substantial number of workforce housing units, so it's not that it's assured that on that side of the city. So for this particular location, we consider appropriate to just focus on the infrastructure. The, the regulation that was adopted a couple of months ago for the Broadway mixed-use district has an intense focus on the workforce housing units. That is more viable to build on that location with the units onsite, so.
My, my second and last question was on the bonus incentive on the infrastructure improvements, just to clarify, that money only comes into the city if the developer's project is above and beyond their right, is that correct?
Yes, exactly. So the, the contribution is only applicable if they are doing a project that goes above what is permitted by right.
Okay, what, do you think that's gonna actually, I mean, actually, I saw some numbers, but do you think that is going to be the case, where we're going to have enough funding to, that's going to bring in some funds for infrastructure improvements in the area?
Well, I mean, the way it's working is basically, these are projects that are listed on the capital improvement project list for the city. So the city is, I mean, as, as resources come available for the city, they will prioritize those projects and be built. So any funds that come in with the incentives will just go in to support those projects, and it will be able to be, get built sooner.
But I know it's specific to that area that you identified, okay. Just wanted to clarify on that, thank you.
All right, any other questions, TK?
No.
Gene, any questions?
Kevi, in your opinion, what was the major objection in the April meeting to this code revision?
I wrote it down. The major objection included the language in regards to workforce housing, the language in regards to, or the potential unintended consequences for submerged lands, and the language in regards to the active use liner. I believe Board Member Patrick Mayfield had asked the question, what is the benefit of having active use liners on the sides? And further discussion with the public and developers was another thing that was mentioned.
Also, there was some mention of, I guess, some developers maybe undergoing like some sort of undue burden. sort of undue burden as opposed to cost versus what similar projects have been approved for. Was that addressed at all? And then my third question was regarding the northern fire protection provision, why that was removed.
Yes, so the, yes, the, for your first question, yes, this was addressed in regards to what we're now proposing with the infrastructure improvement incentive costs, as you can see on the slide here. So this should be more equitable costs compared to what's already been provided by approved projects. And the language in regards to the National Fire Protection Association requirement was to address Planning Board Member Peter Piffco, because you indicated to remove that language since it's already covered through the building code requirements.
Thank you.
Did you? Any other questions?
I plead my guilty.
Patrick, any questions?
I do have one, one follow-up. So based on what you've presented here, with this overlay, there would be no avenues for variance or waiver requests for height or for setbacks?
That's correct.
Okay.
And FAR, floor area.
And FAR.
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, what you've spelled out is the maximum?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Will, any questions?
So last time, last time Rick presented, there was a map that showed what properties were affected versus what had already been approved, right? And so one of the concerns were, I think you're down to like five properties that are affected with this revision. Right? Do you have that map from the previous meeting?
We don't have the maps from the previous meeting, but essentially, all properties within this proposed district would have to apply, would apply if a proposed development was to come before the city for review if this, if this proposed development regulations gets approved later on. So all properties within this district would have to fall under these regulations.
So I was reading some language that said it actually starts 12 months after approval by commission. Right? That's what it says in here? Usually, we have the laptop, and I don't have my glasses tonight, so, but I thought I read something about it, about when it becomes...
I mean, any tax change that is approved is 60 days after approval.
Excuse me?
When a tax amendment is approved by the city commission, it's in effect 60 days before.
Sixty?
After.
Sixty days after, okay. All right, I think you had asked about the permitted by right or approved. And, okay, so can you explain the, the ratio of submerged land to upland? So you had said something along the lines of, give me like a real case scenario. Let's say that you have two and a half acres, you have two acres submerged, then a half acre of dry. What would be permitted?
So if it's two acres of upland and a half acre of submerged...
No, the opposite.
Oh.
Half acre of dry.
A half acre of dry.
Two acres of underwater.
Two acres of underwater. So that would, so we would look at it as a half acre of dry upland property and a half acre of submerged.
Okay, so whatever...
So that would be one acre, would be the aggregate.
Okay.
But he's referring to this.
Correct, clarifying?
Yes.
No? Okay. And so in that example, you have the setbacks which can't be changed, right? So in essence, the developer would be limited in what they could do based on what they could fit on that property with the front setback and the 15-foot side setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. I have a note here about 260 and 40, but I don't know what I was... I guess the other question is, you know, in a couple, in both of these emails that were recently provided to us is, well, one, you know, the point was made that unless they ask for variances beyond that, you're not going to have any contributions to the capital improvement fund. So, you know, and this is not really in your purview, but I'm just gonna say it anyway, which is, you know, how does the city plan on improving that area if the developers
I mean, the, I don't think I have an answer for you about this question, but the city has, again, the capital improvement plan that it is listed, it has improvements and projects that are necessary for the entire city. It has a five-year projection.
Okay.
And as the funds become available, administration will allocate those funds, but...
Okay. All right. So there is a mechanism that sort of, when they get around to it and the funds are there, is when it gets done?
Yes, depending of the project. For example, I think the improvements that are right now gonna go underway for Spruce Avenue, I think south of 36, I believe, they were funding that was acquired from FDUT. So there are other funds that are also coming, and depending on where we find the funds, if they are from the general fund or other sources, they be allocated.
Okay.
Any questions, Will?
I'm sure I will, but.
You can come back to me. All right, well, maybe, maybe not. Patrick?
Patrick, I'm sorry.
Peter?
Robert. I'm Robert, sorry.
Go ahead. If you have no questions, Deborah, have you any questions?
Can you bring up the road cross-section diagram that you had? And then I have another question for Anna Maria later.
This one?
No, the road, cross-section through the road.
Oh, the road.
Later on.
Okay.
There we go. So I know that Flagler changes quite a bit from one end to the other, but my recollection is that the section looking north, you had residential on the left, you had the sidewalk, you have a little bit of green space, you have a bicycle lane, two travel lanes, bicycle lane, parking, and then you have a little bit of landscape and the sidewalk. So by this diagram, do I assume you're eliminating all the bicycle lanes?
I don't recall bicycle lane with them. There aren't. Yeah.
Huh? No, I know. So are they being eliminated, or?
There isn't any bicycle lanes on this section of North Flagler.
Really?
But with the multipurpose pathway, that would accommodate for bicyclists and pedestrians walking.
I could swear that I saw bicycle lanes in that portion of Flagler. But anyways, would you mind looking into that? And then, Anna Maria, I have a couple of questions for you. So in terms of the capital plan, are they ranked in priority, or developers just simply pick what they feel they want to contribute?
I mean, that's one thing that will be interesting to get your opinion. The original proposal was that the developer could pick a project. We just listed the projects. I don't know, I mean, how the developer will pick one priority over the other one. Maybe if the funds, depending on the funds that are available, the city will select which ones are more urgent. I think that will be a better approach. The funds will go to a specific fund allocated for improvements in the area, and then the city will prioritize depending on the technical need of the, the needs of the projects. There are utility needs that are more prominent than resurfacing of one street or the construction of a bike lane, depends on what it is. I think that will be a better approach than letting the developer to pick. Exactly.
And also, that was my other question. Assuming five to 10 years from now, what percentage of that total capital budget do you think you can achieve with all the future, all the sites being developed?
I mean, it's a very tricky question, because when you, we did the estimate of just the potential properties that could get rid of, that's an estimate, we don't know what will happen. Some of those are projects that are already approved, that have not been built, but they will not contribute any money because they were already approved. I mean, it's very unlikely that if they come in the future and they want to make changes, that they decide, for example, some of their planned developments on the northern, that they decide to abandon the planned development and follow the overlay. Very unlikely. They have more units than the code allows right now, so I don't expect that. And then other projects are smaller, smaller properties that will have to be assembled to be developed. So we just did an estimate of what is the potential, but we don't know exactly when really those projects gonna come in line, if they're gonna move forward or not. So, I mean, the two projects that are now being proposed are two projects submitted before this regulation has been adopted, so they not subject of these contribution. They are being processed as a residential plan development. It's more like a matter of, let's put some rules in place, so we are all in agreement of what could happen on the corridor, and when any project comes, they know what is expected and what they are allowed, instead of the current process that is a residential plan development that is not clear what is, right?
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions?
I have one question, or either clarification for Table 2 on the conditional minimum setback requirements. So once this comes back and it's voted in, how, my question is, how permanent is it? Is it truly etched in stone, or can they come back and ask for an amendment to what's being approved for the setback requirements?
I mean, what we are proposing is that is not, variances are not allowed from those regulations. However, I mean, we know the code is not a static document. It can be modified, the same way we are modifying right now, it could be modified in the future. But just as a one project coming and requesting a variance for a particular condition on the side setbacks or front setbacks, the board will not have the authority to do it.
It would require a code modification.
They will have to request a code amendment.
That we're doing here, right?
Thank you.
Sam?
I don't have any questions right now.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much for the public wish to be heard on this. I have some cards. This is a, this is not a vote we're taking, but we still welcome public input. So I have three cards. I'm gonna call them up. This is only lectern with a working microphone, so I asked you to come to this one. If anyone who I'm not calling wishes to be heard, please complete a card and give it to the clerk. So the three names I have is Angela Ogborne, Claudia Kirk-Barto, and Kent Wilmey. If you all can come forward to this podium. We don't have a working clock. I'm gonna try to keep time. I'll hold my pen up when you're down to 30 seconds, and hold my hand up when you're down to 10 seconds, okay? Just give me a moment to get this thing started.
Appreciate that.
She's gonna try to keep track too. Between the two of us, hopefully we'll have it. In fact, I'm gonna let her do it, she's far more competent. So just love to know when there's 30 seconds and 10 seconds. All right, please state your name.
My name is Angela Ogborne, president of Northwood Harbor and a longtime resident. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I hope tonight is truly a discussion, one where we can actively engage and help shape the future of our neighborhood. In 2022, when the ALBA project was moving forward, our community began advocating for the creation of a master plan. We respectfully requested that the city consider pausing development to allow time for a thoughtful, comprehensive approach, one that would bring clarity, consistency, and development that complements our existing community. While that pause did not occur, we appreciate that discussion around a more structured planning framework has since gained momentum. The city workshop held on October 21st introduced the initial concept for the Flagler overlay and marked an important step forward. That meeting helped initiate the process that has brought us here tonight. We understand that several projects were submitted before and shortly after the workshop, and we acknowledge the complexity of coordinating planning efforts and ongoing development activity. Just yesterday, we received the latest revised, but still work in progress, draft of the overlay. As residents, not planning professionals, this is a substantial amount of complex information to absorb in a short amount of time. There are several key changes between April's version and tonight's presentation. There are also improvements. With that in mind, we respect that Northwood Harbor Board be given the opportunity to participate in this discussion and continue with the input. We're eager to work collaboratively and constructively with city staff and planning board and developers to ensure the outcome reflects the community long-term vision. Thank you. But now I want to answer some of the questions that you asked regarding the sidewalk. Yes, there is a bike lane, if you give me that permission just to answer those three questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the bike, the multipurpose sidewalk, which is a 12-foot wide sidewalk, ends at 5,600. From 5,600 north to Manatee Lagoon, there is a bike lane in the road. Workforce housing, the reason we want it workforce housing is because it is such a strong, integral part of the Broadway corridor. We felt leave that to there and allow for the infrastructure in our community. We need major improvements.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the extra time.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Kirk-Barto, and I reside at 1051 First Street, and I serve as the vice president of the Northwood Harbor Neighborhood Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening and the progress that has been made on the Flagler overlay. We've been requesting the north end master plan, so not just an overlay, but a master plan for the north end for quite some time. We wanted to see consistency, so we wouldn't have to work with each developer individually trying to get the infrastructure repaired and updated in the north end of the city that has been neglected for far too long. I'll say that again. The north end of the city has been neglected for far too long, and I feel like we're putting that all on developers. That should be part of the plan. I shouldn't break my car going through potholes, our sidewalks falling apart. When I spoke April 15th, I said that we received a 30-page overlay document the Friday before the meeting. Well, this time, we received the new overlay documents late yesterday. As a layperson, I am not a quick study, but it doesn't look like what we saw last time. And there was a lot of new math, lots of new math. I've lived in Palm Beach County all my life, in West Palm Beach, more than half of that. I raised three children here, and there's a lot of transformation happening throughout the city. Please ensure that everyone is included in the benefits from this transformation by fixing what we've been promised for far too long. As an example, personal example, I submitted to the West Palm Beach Key a sidewalk issue. The sidewalk is broken in front of my house last July, that's July of 2024, and that barricade is still outside the front of my house, and it'll be July 2025 in a couple of weeks. So we want to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the neighbors, the city, the developers, for the current and future residents of our city. So we, again, collaboratively. And thank you so much for volunteering and serving on this board, because it's a lot of work for our city. And I do want to thank the city staff for all of their work through all these changes.
Thank you, ma'am. Servio, come forward.
Board, thanks for being here tonight. Kent Wilmery, 4918 North Flagler Drive. I've been in front of you guys before. We appreciate the effort that the staff has worked on, especially on this concept that they had about paying per foot versus looking at it in a different matrix that I think is way more reasonable. Couple of things that I have is, from a development perspective, the apogee next to us that was, has been approved, they only have 20-foot setbacks on 100-foot lot. And on this matrix that they have, it should be... matrix that they have, it should be equal or greater than a hundred feet to get an FAR of three, which apogee is, so that it would be a fair situation that my neighbor and I could have if anybody ever wanted to be, develop our property. We had hoped this would, had happened quite some time ago, and now we have two major projects moving forward. One of them has an FAR of three point four four versus its neighbor is a two point three three. The volume is horrendous for the neighborhood. So I, I, I think from a development standpoint, if we could maybe look at not being so hard on variances and waivers, purely from an architectural design standpoint, if you have some really good, and we have really good architects coming to town now, they can be creative and inventive, and I think that could help create better projects if we're not so... I think we need waivers and variances, and I like what Anna has worked on with the budget as far as, you know, per unit. Right now, there's only two projects in the pipeline. I don't see, living in the neighborhood, any new projects coming forward in the next many years. But we like the fact that, that staff and your board has worked to try to be prepared in the future. And I thank you very much and the city staff.
Thank you so much, sir. Would anyone else who's not spoken wishes to speak, let us know? And if not, we'll bring them back to the board. Kevi, how are we leaving this today? Did you want, you heard the questions. Did anyone else want to give them any more feedback? Is that what you're looking for here today?
More feedback.
So let's just start, hey, let me start with you and work our way down. Any additional feedback for staff?
No more comments at this time.
Gene, any thoughts?
Just maybe clarify why no allowance for the variances whatsoever? Why is it a, a bright-line rule?
Patrick?
Oh, was it?
I'm sorry, Gene, were you done? I thought you were.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to cut you short.
He's waiting for an answer.
Oh, I thought he was-
You want me to answer?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're only prohibiting floor area ratio variances, front and side setback variances, height variances, and new plan developments. We're not prohibiting, um, variances from architectural design standards, any other type of, um, relief that would be requested. But this, this, um, prohibition would create and allow for a more common vision for this area where it's simpler for developers and the public to realize and see what would be allowed within this area and what would not be allowed in this area. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, and then really, really quick follow-up. Do you have any examples where maybe there was a FOPA or, um, you know, maybe the city regrets granting a variance for a setback? And maybe it's, uh, not been as aesthetically, um, accommodating as hoped for?
I, I think my answer for that will be, um, the residential plan developments are basically variances. They are not allowed, they are not able to comply with the Bay Suning Regulation, and then that's why they are using a plan development as a strategy to go in and do something that is not allowed. So it's waivers, it's a different language, but it's the same concept. So I think what we're trying to do is create a predictable environment with the elements that are more difficult to manage. The side setbacks are, because of the constraints of these sides, are an issue for the neighbors, and then the front setback affects or impacts the residential part. If anything, I will say the only one that we could work with, and it will be okay, is what is called the rear because it's a water setback. Because that, at the end of the day, I mean, like, not that we want the building less than fifteen feet to the water. I don't think even the owners will want that, so it's not that the case. But the other ones are like to create a more predictable environment. So variances of other elements, like, for example, the active use requirement along Flagler, I see the developers asking for variances for that because the sites are specific, the way the entrance is configured, the way they need to put the, the mechanical equipment, despite we're saying you cannot put it on the front setback, but maybe they have to put it immediately behind because of PL is asking. I mean, that one is one that we need certain flexibility and will be allowed to ask for variances. But the other ones, the intention is to create that predictable environment, so it's not subject to, um, approval depending, depending of the, of the project. The same with the height. That's fundamental that we restrict the height. It's an established, I mean, we, I mean, the community agrees to a certain height and cannot be approved beyond that without going through a code amendment process.
All right, Gene? Patrick?
Yeah, my only comment, I think this is all a step in the right direction. I thank staff for hearing our feedback and making those changes. Seems much more salient, you know, the way you're presenting some of the nuances of this now. But I think just generally speaking, I think there's a history in this city of the plan developments causing a lot of heartburn. And I think that in the future, moving forward, I think staff needs to look to other districts in the city as well that are changing in the same way to give more general rules and requirements, you know, limiting so that someone can't come in and just write their own set of rules. I, I think, I think we should adapt this approach and expand it in other areas of the city.
Thank you. Patrick, Will, any thoughts or comments to share with staff?
Yeah, um, not being a lawyer, um, when you see prohibited, the front and side setback variances, what, what, what I would like to see to Ken, Ken's point, which is, um, equal or greater, right? So if somebody can create something architecturally, well, it wouldn't matter, right, because you have the minimum. So if you were gonna do a twenty-foot setback, you wouldn't need a variance. It would only be if you wanted a ten-foot setback, right?
From the side?
From the side, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yes.
All right, so forget that. That makes no sense. I needed to talk it through to, to get there. But I would like to see, um, you know, at, when you guys do the final for this that we vote on, that you've met again with the neighborhood association and that they fully understand what is proposed and have another opportunity to give input outside of the public sphere to collaborate with them. Just, just a point of, of clarification. When, between the last meeting and this meeting, did you all have conversations with people outside of the city in crafting this?
Yes.
Who was mostly in that room or in those meetings? Not persons specifically, but were they developers? Were they planners from other places?
Developers.
Okay. So, yeah, we'd really like to see, I would really like to see a balance between conversations with developers and the community in crafting this type of, um, rulemaking, right? Because we know the developers, they're capitalists, and I love it, great, you know? But their, their wants and needs are gonna be different than the community's wants and needs, and it's really, the right answer is someplace in the middle, right? Something that meets the needs of the cities, that's gonna promote, uh, capital expenditure here, that's gonna promote increased real estate values and projects, but also take into account the people who've lived here for twenty years and seen sensible development in their backyards.
Thank you. Peter?
I'm encouraged by the positive feedback that you got from the community, and I think this is an excellent example on how to inject a little predictability in terms of future developments for people that have difficulty understanding what can be built. So I wanted to thank the staff for doing a very good job so far.
Deborah, any comments?
No further comments.
Sam, any comments?
I kinda wanted to go back to the, the budgeting of the capital improvements, because I think it is important to, to really understand, you know, e- even if you can say that the developable opportunity in the area, based on the incentive program laid out, would actually pay for those capital improvements, you know, there's things like, there's obviously the, the cost of construction changes, the, you know, the needs change. I mean, you know, these might be the needs today, but, uh, obviously, you're not gonna have nine hundred and sixty units built tomorrow. And if it takes ten years to develop and build nine hundred and sixty units, even if every single developer and every single unit was paid for at this amount, there'll be a cost differential between this and ten years from now. And I'm, I, you know, being in the city for as many years as I've had and seeing this particular area, this, this is probably only a fraction of the improvements that are needed. So I would, I would like to think that there's a, a greater comprehensive plan to, to really work on the improvements that's separate from, uh, the capital improvements raised by projects. I think that, you know, the, the desirability of the area has led to people wanting to develop and to, to be able to offer these kinds of incentive packages or, or to, to be able to raise the kind of capital to do this improvement. But it really should be, um, you know, really looked at as, okay, this is like icing on the cake. This is additional improvements that we can make to city, uh, infrastructure, city parks, things like that, to really affect the quality of life. Not that, okay, these are the twenty-two million dollars of projects that we need done, and it's gonna be paid for by these nine hundred and sixty units at some point, uh, you know, when they get developed. So obviously, it's, that's a greater, a greater project and a greater, you know, comprehensive focus to, to be able to pay for this. But it's a good start, and it certainly is a way to raise some capital, uh, to do the projects. So I, I encourage the neighborhood to be very vocal with, uh, being able to work on other ways to raise capital and, and raise money to, to work on these projects, not just in this particular area, but all over the city. So, but it's a good start.
All right, thank you, Sam. All right, I think you've received the feedback from the board, and we appreciate your efforts.
I just wanted to say, I want, I like your, uh, suggestion about putting, uh, giving discretion to staff as far as picking the projects that the, um, funds would go to for capital improvements. If, if I could see that, I think that'd be, that'd be beneficial, empowering the staff and making that decision as opposed to developers.
Okay.
Well, just when we thought we're done, go ahead. Well, no, I, I, I do want to say thank you, because, you know, at our last meeting, you know, we all had reservations and asked you to go back, and, and this is definitely a much better, more concise plan where you really thought through it, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. All right, if we have no, um, new business or unfinished business? I'm sorry, say. Yes, well, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.